We need the sunshine law.
This is the Thursday, March 18th, 2021, meeting of the Franklin Township Zoning Board of Adjustment. Franklin Township is operating under a declaration of state and local emergency due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, and it has been determined that the public's attendance at meetings of the zoning board would pose a risk to their health, safety, and welfare. Therefore, this meeting has been relocated from the council chambers of the Franklin Township Municipal Building to a virtual meeting format and is being conducted utilizing virtual/remote telecommunications equipment in conformance with the directives of the State of New Jersey. The relocation of this virtual meeting of the zoning board was posted in the township's official newspaper, The Courier-News, on the township's website, and on exterior doorways of the municipal building. It's noted detailed the following means of public participation in this remote meeting: link to the virtual meeting via WebEx and a call-in number for those without internet access. Public inspection of application materials was made available via the township website and/or by appointment into municipal building. Formal action may be taken at this virtual meeting. Remind the board members, please mute yourselves unless you wish to speak or to provide a vote. Please withhold questions until all of the applicant's witnesses have finished presenting. Actually, in this case, for the second hearing, we'll wait for each witness to finish their testimony before asking them questions. Instructions for public input: For those members of the public that are watching via WebEx who wish to speak, there are two options. Press the raised hand button. To use this feature, click on the Participants icon in the lower right corner of your screen, which will open a new Participants window on the right side of your screen. In the lower right-hand corner of that window will be a hand icon. Click on the hand icon. Or use the chat function. Either use the default, which is Everyone, or Chat Mark Healy. Do not send the message to Christine Woodbury, as she's unable to view messages during the meeting, and do not use the Q&amp;A function, as that section will not be checked during the meeting. For those members of the public that are listening via the call-in number who wish to speak, please press star three. At the appropriate time in the meeting, township staff will announce your name, unmute you, and you will have opportunity to provide comment or ask questions. Please provide your name and address. If providing a statement, the board attorney will swear you in. After speaking, if on WebEx, please press the lower hand button. If calling in, press star three again. One last thing, Mr. Chairman, we do have two hearings. One is for a lot of area variance for a single-family house, and the other one is the data bad-won application. So I'd ask the public if they're here for the data bad-won application and have questions on that. Please wait until that hearing is being heard before you raise your hand, and only those members that are here to speak or ask questions about the Demetrikus General Contracting Application, which is the first one, please raise your hand at that point if they want to have comments on that one. I'm just asking that the public not all raise their hand at once. Thank you.
Okay, would you call the roll?
Harold Bethia?
Here.
Bruce McCracken? Bruce, unmute yourself, please.
Yes, here.
Joel Reese?
Yeah.
Alan Rich?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Here.
Robert Shepherd?
Here.
Rich Prokonic?
Here.
Nala Akir?
Here.
Vaseem Verdas?
Here.
And Chairman Thomas?
Here. Moving to the hearing section, Cedar Hill Prep, ZBA 1900041. Applicants seeking a D variance to allow operation of a summer day camp, site plan to install a soccer field and a running track at 152 Cedar Grove Lane, Somerset, Block 424.12, Lot 8.0, Lot 6.03, in the R40 zone, carried to April 15th, 2021, with no further notification needed. For those wishing to participate in the hearing, by the way, a virtual WebEx meeting, the event addresses for attendees will be posted on the township's website For those wishing to listen by telephone, the call-in number is 1 + 408-418-9388, and the access code is 173-860-7132. The first actual hearing tonight, Demetrikus Construction.
We have a resolution. And minutes. We have a resolution.
I can't understand.
Mr. Chairman, there's a resolution and minutes for approval also on the agenda before we get to the first application.
All right, my mistake going back to the minutes. Are there any motions for minutes?
I moved to accept.
A second.
There was a resolution. We were going to try to get the minutes, but we didn't get them. I think that's something saying that if I get them, I'll send them to you by Monday. We never got them. She had trouble getting them. So the only thing we have right now is a resolution for Tom and Karen Duffy, which was emailed to you guys the same day as the agenda. And that, Mr. Chairman, is Thomas and Karen Duffy, ZBA 1900034. The only people that cannot make a motion on that is Bruce McCracken, Robert Shepherd, or Vaseem Verdas.
I moved to accept the resolution.
I'll second it.
Okay, poll board.
Harold Bethia?
Yes.
Joel Reese?
Yes.
Alan Rich?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Rich Prokonic?
Yes.
Nala Akir?
Yes.
And Chairman Thomas?
Yes. Now we move to Demetrikus Construction, ZBA 2000025, C variances in which the applicant seeking to build a single-family home, 40 Sedan Road, Somerset, Block 36.01, Lot 13.02, in the Zone A, carried from March 4th. Notification notice was needed. We have an attorney present.
Yeah, so brought the attorney in. I'm bringing in their engineer and the applicant.
Good evening. My name is James Mitchell. I'm with the law firm of Hambro Mitchell in Dayton, New Jersey, representing the applicant, Demetrikus General Contracting, Inc., who have contract purchasers of the existing lot at 40 Sedan Road.
Excuse me, one minute. Mr. Thomas, we did have a discussion item, Franklin 2 Associates LTD. It's an appeal of the zoning decision that's being carried to May 6, 2021. I just wanted that to be on the record as well. It is appearing on the preliminary agenda that was posted on the website, so I just wanted to put that into the record as well. Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Mitch.
No problem. If I may, I have a brief introduction, and we have one witness we're looking to call this evening.
Okay, proceed.
Okay, thank you. So tonight, we're seeking both instances to permit the construction of a new home on the lot at 40 Sedan Road. The primary relief we're seeking is with regards to lot size and lot frontage. We're also asking for some de minimis relief on the proposed side yard, but we can eliminate that variance if the board does not agree with the granting of the relief. We advance the goals of good planning. Specifically, we're seeking a variance to permit construction on an existing two-acre lot, where technically, the zone requirement would be six acres, and we are seeking permission for a frontage of 215 feet, where technically, it would be 400 feet required. I'm emphasizing the term "technically" for a reason. The nonconformity of the lot we're seeking permission to develop, or actually redevelop, is an anomaly and possibly the result of an oversight. When this lot was created as a two-acre lot, it was not only conforming, but oversized. The zone at the time required 50,000 square feet, just over one acre, and a home was built on that lot. After the lot was developed, the plans on both sides of it, behind it, and across the street were developed, and as part of that development, all of the surrounding land was incorporated into the NRPC overlay zone, where two-acre minimum lot size and 200 feet of frontage are required. As is explained in the letter submitted and on file by my partner Steve Hambro regarding the history of the lot, it appears that even town staff at one point believed the subject lot had been included in the two-acre zone, because before the existing home and barn on the site were demolished in 2012, the owner of the lot checked with the town staff and was assured that the lot would remain as a right-pillable lot, because it was in conformance with the surrounding lots. Accordingly, the development we now propose is completely in keeping with the surrounding development, arguably even permitted, since the existing owner did not intend to abandon the grandfather residential use of the site when he demolished the existing home. Nonetheless, and without any waiver of an argument that the development might be permitted, we are here tonight seeking relief from the board in the form of bulk variance relief to develop the property. To that end, I have one witness I plan to present tonight, Mr. Frank Antisol, our engineer and planner. And if there aren't any questions for me at this time, I would call him to review the specifics of our application and explain how the proposed development meets the standard for relief.
Okay, bring him on, and let's get him sworn in.
Mr. Mitchell, I'll just ask that if he's going to be both expert in engineering and in planning, that you transition from the engineering to the planning, so the record is clean, and if the board has any questions or comments, that you allow them to answer it specifically to the testimony.
I will note that we anticipate substantially all of his testimony being planning, because we're just seeking the bulk variances. However, since he is also credentialed as an engineer, and the engineer who signed the plans, I just wanted to have him qualify both ways.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Is he on, Mark?
I'm on. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, we can hear you, Frank. I guess let's get you sworn in.
I can't see him.
Do you have your camera on, Frank? Turn it on in the middle, in the bottom.
Okay, there it goes. Sorry about that.
Great.
There you are.
Do you swear or affirm a testimony you're about to give would be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Name and address for the record, please.
It's Frank Antisol, 12 Concord Drive, Kendall Park, New Jersey.
Okay, Counsel, you can go ahead.
Okay, and Frank, could you just review for the board your expertise and credentials?
Sure. I have a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from Widener University. I have a Master's degree from Stevens Institute of Technology, and I'm a licensed professional engineer in the states of New Jersey, Pennsylvania, and Delaware. And I'm also a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I have testified before over 50 boards in the state of New Jersey, and I am also currently the zoning board engineer in the township of South Brunswick.
Okay. I would just ask that he be admitted as an expert with respect to planning and engineering. Hearing, no objection.
Mr. Chairman?
Dan, can you answer? It looks like we've lost Mr. Thomas for a moment. I see his name, but I don't see him, so... Or do you need Mr. Thomas?
Yeah, I would like to, Chair, let's see if we can reconnect with him first.
Okay.
You will need to be part of the presentation to vote on it anyway.
Understood.
You okay with the notary problem, Dan?
I'm sorry. Can you guys step back from the microphone, because you're muffled. There you go.
You okay with that notary problem that I brought to your attention?
Yes, the notary actually, based on the governor's orders for the emergency because of the pandemic, actually stayed the requirements, or I should say told the requirements for the notary's commission expiration. So I don't have a problem with it, and as I indicated, also, the the notary for the property owner is appropriate, so I have no issues.
Okay, thanks, Dan.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Bob Thomas, I saw you come on and go back off. Are you okay? Bob Thomas, if you can hear me, it might be better if you sign completely off and then try to recome back, you know, come back in again?
Maybe we could use the co-chairman.
We, Counsel, we do have a, we have a full board tonight, so if we have to move forward on the bulk variances, we can. I'm just trying to see if Mr. Thomas can get back in.
I don't think we have any problem being patient. I know the board has a busy night, but we have no problem waiting.
Thank you.
And we will be brief once we start.
Maybe we can use the co-chairman.
We might have to, Gary, but I'm just trying to see if we can get Bob connected before we do that.
Mark is going to try to text him now and ask him to come completely out and then go back in. That might loosen up whatever his issue is.
So Dan, can we go with Gary's suggestion here and have the vice chair? If he's having problems, we can do that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, I text him, I'm not hearing from him, so I don't know if it'll be five seconds or 10 minutes.
That's fine. Counsel, you're okay with moving forward? It looks like we have a full board tonight, as I indicated previously.
Yeah, with the bulk variances, I'm not concerned.
Okay, great. Mr. Shepherd, you are now acting chair of the opinion that Mr. Antisol has provided sufficient background to be qualified as an expert, and we can move forward.
It sounded to me like he presented information only with regard to his engineering background.
Turn your camera.
I've also testified as a professional planner before at least 20 boards in the state of New Jersey over the last 25 years.
Then I think we will accept you as an expert in both the area of engineering and also planning.
Thank you. And Frank, you've taken a look at the application and the surrounding area and the relevant zoning?
Yes, I have.
Okay, tell us what you found.
The subject property is known as Lot 13.02 and Block 36.01, and is located at 40 Sedan Street. It is a two-acre lot located on the north side of Sedan Road between South Middle Bush Road and People's Line Road. The property is currently zoned A, Architect Agricultural Zone, which requires a six-acre lot. The property previously contained a home and a barn built in the 80s, when the zoning of the property was 50,000 square feet. The home and barn were demolished in 2012, and the applicant is now looking to build a 3,651-square-foot residential dwelling that is in character with the other dwellings in the area. When looking at the zoning map, all the other properties that surround our lot are in the Natural Resource Preservation Cluster Overlay Zone, or else also known as the NRPC Zone. In essence, the overlay zone developed everything around our property and left the subject lot out. The proposed lot and dwelling meet all the bulk requirements of the NRP Zone, but since the lot is in the agricultural zone, the applicant is seeking the bulk variance for a lot area where six acres are required and two acres are proposed. Lot front where 400 feet is required and 215 feet is existing. The side yard, 75 feet required, and 73.02 is proposed, and the total side yard of the two side yards together, which 148.02 feet is proposed. We looked at the adjoining properties to see if there was anything that we could purchase that would eliminate these variances. The adjoining properties are all between two acres and 2.33 acres in size. So even if we were to purchase a portion of any of the adjacent properties, there still would not be sufficient property to remove the nonconformities or variances that we are requesting. When looking at our lot, it is similar in size and frontage with the existing and surrounding neighborhood, which are approximately two-acre lots with 200-foot frontages. Looking at the comments in the TRC letter dated January 28, 2021, we agree to comply with all the comments on there, except for two that we need to discuss. The first one is the requested side yard and total side yard setback variances appear that they could be avoidable with minor modifications to the proposal. And that is, that is true. We could rotate the house slightly and eliminate the side yard setback variance that's requested. However, when we looked at the neighborhood, we saw that all the homes were parallel to the roadway. They were, they were set that way, so they were sort of equal distance on either side from the roadway. So we tried to mimic that and make our house parallel with the roadway, but since our side lot lines are not at 90-degree angles to the roadway, it creates a bulk variance for a side yard setback. So in our opinion, we would prefer to keep the house so it's parallel with the street and request the side yard setback, which is two feet, and is pretty de minimis as far as we're concerned. The other one that we need to discuss is the sidewalks and curbing should be shown on the plans, or the applicant should provide justification for a waiver of the same. We visited the neighborhood, and we didn't see any sidewalks or curbs in the surrounding neighborhood. So therefore, we weren't proposing any. If we were to propose a sidewalk, it would not connect any of the sidewalks, so we're asking for the waiver of the sidewalk. And all the other comments in the TRC report, we're willing to comply with.
Not to throw you off, Frank, but just so the board understands, in case anyone hasn't seen it either in plan or in real life, the lot to the left and to the right of us both have homes on them, and the lot to the rear of us as well. Is that correct?
They all have homes on it. That is correct.
So those are not undeveloped lots with future development coming, and that's just my...
They all have, they all have existing homes, and they are all, they appear to be occupied and well taken care of. These bulk variances are C variances, and we feel the C variances can be granted under under either the C1 criteria or the C2 criteria. From the C1 perspective, the lot is an existing two-acre zone, two-acre lot that is surrounded by two-acre lots that are in the NRP Zone. And as previously stated, there's no way to remove the nonconformities. From the C2 perspective, the existing lot and the existing lot frontage are in character and similar to the lot, lot area and lot frontages of the lots in the surrounding neighborhood. When looking at the special reasons for granting these variances, the application can be found consistent with several of the stated purposes of the municipal land use law, namely, Purpose A, which is to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in the state in a manner which promotes the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. Special Purpose G, which is to promote, provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of agricultural, residential, recreational, commercial, and industrial uses, both public and private, according to respective environmental requirements in order to meet the needs of all citizens. And also Special Purpose I, which is to promote a desirable visual environmental environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangements. As to the negative criteria, the proposed project will present no substantial detriment to the public good. The negative criteria are met as the project is consistent with the surrounding uses and does not impair the zone plan. There's no detriment to the neighborhood, and the site is suitable for the project, and the proposed bulk variances can be granted without impairment to the township's zone plan or zoning ordinance.
All right. Thank you, Frank. I don't have any questions for the witness at this point. I'm happy to open it up to the board of the professionals.
I have a question. You mentioned, this is Cheryl Bethia, you mentioned that you had inquired about to, to the properties to the left and the right. Do you have documentation indicating?
We do have letters to the properties to the left and the right, and certified receipts for them. And one of the homeowners may be here tonight, might be interested in selling us some property. The only thing is, it doesn't, in my opinion, satisfy the requirements under the law, because they only have .33 of an acre, and we need four acres to bring our lot. That's, no, they have 2.33 acres, but in order to remain in compliance on their lot, they would have to keep two of the 2.33 acres. So the most they could sell us is .33 of an acre, and it wouldn't bring us into conformity.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Well, I guess I have a question for our attorney. Does the applicant have to produce the letters and the the return receipts as part of this application? Or is the fact that the people on either side of them couldn't provide enough land to resolve the problem, does that simply eliminate the need for those documents?
I think, I think it's kind of a belt-and-suspender type of analysis, so I think, Mr. Mitchell, you did actually provide us with the letter and the certified mailings, but because, as a matter of fact, in the testimony from the planner/engineer was that there's no possible way that those lots could sell enough to make this lot conforming, and while those remain conforming, then, you know, ex post facto, you have a situation where you cannot, you know, the buy-sell arrangement to make a lot conforming cannot be achieved.
Thank you.
I do have, I'm sorry, I have one question regarding the side yard. Can you give me the figures again? I heard the two feet were being requested. What's the requirement for the A-zone, and what's the actual?
The requirement for the A-zone is 75 feet.
Okay.
And we're proposing 73.02 feet.
Okay.
And we're, and the other side yard is conforming at 75 feet.
Your testimony, sorry.
So go ahead.
And your testimony is that the 73.02 feet complies with the NRPC overlay zone? It just doesn't comply with the A-zone?
Correct. The, the side yard setback required by the NRPC Zone would be 25 feet.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
And just as a further clarification, we could make, make seventy five feet on both sides of the house, but it would require building the house parallel with our lot lines, which are not perpendicular to the road, which would mean the house was slightly catty corner compared to all the other houses on the street. If we want to line the house up and square it up the way that all the rest of the houses on the street are, we need the two and a half or two and a bit feet of relief in a zone that where everyone surrounding us only has to have twenty five feet of distance. So Frank, did I explain that correctly?
Yes, that's correct.
Great. Thank you for clarifying that. That's all I have.
We're just, yeah, one, this is Mark Healy, one clarification. Since the one side yard is just short of two feet short of the requirement, the resulting total side yard requirement is one, one hundred and forty eight point oh two feet where one fifty is required. So it's, they're that same, just short of two feet short for both the side and total side requirements.
And we would certainly, except if the board feels it's not better planning to square it up with the rest of the houses, we would withdraw that request for relief, but we think it's kind of a classic C two variance.
Mark, could you give me those numbers again? I'm sorry, one forty eight is what's proposed?
Yeah, yes, the, the proposed total side yard is one forty eight point oh two where one fifty is required.
Okay.
And then the side yard proposed is seventy three point oh two or seventy five is required.
Great, thank you so much.
If there weren't any other questions, unless we want Frank to put on his engineering hat, if there are any engineering questions, those are all, I think, really in the nature of planning testimony.
I just have one about the public water. Is that going to be hooked up to public water?
Yes, it is. We believe public waters in the street and we would hook it up to the public water in the street.
So before we conclude the, the board comments, I'll just again remind the public if they have comments or questions on this application only. If you're on WebEx, you can do the raised hand function or if you're calling in, or you could do the chat function, or you could, if you're calling in, you can do star three. I'll just take the opportunity real quick to, I guess, summarize it as far as what I heard. Basically, when the lot was created by subdivision, it was in a zone that required fifty thousand square feet and it was a two acre lot that was created. It had a house on it for some time. Then over the, I guess at one point, the house was demolished. I don't know what came first, but then at other, some other point, the area was rezoned to A. The A zone required six acres. Also, there was this NRPC overlay zone created and there was a subdivision that then resulted in the area completely surrounding this two acre lot with two acre lots. So this is a lot that's kind of surrounded in a sea of two acre lots. And also during that time, I guess a period of a few decades, the, the house was demolished and now they're coming back to build a new house on the lot and they are not technically in that NRPC overlay zone. They're in the A zone, so they technically need this lot area variance despite the fact that they are two acres in a sea of two acre lots. Mr. Antesel, would you agree that, did I summarize basically your testimony correctly?
Yes, you did.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I believe we're at the point now that we can engage the public unless there's any other board questions or professionals questions, we could go to the public.
I believe that's correct. Mr. Healy, can you see whether there's anyone in the public that would like to make a comment or ask a question?
I am scrolling through the attendee list and checking the chat area and I do not see anybody wishing to speak or ask a question.
All right, well then.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Thomas, I see you've returned. Did you hear all of the testimony or? You gotta unmute yourself, I can't hear you.
Do you want to unmute?
We can hear you, go ahead, you're unmuted. It looks to me as if you're unmuted. I just didn't know how much of the testimony you had heard or not heard, so I was getting, you know, when I get ready to call, I don't know if I'm supposed to call you.
I would, I would have changed.
Okay, thank you.
I guess there's a note in the, in the audience that is interested in making a comment or has a question. Public portion of the hearing at this point. And, and I guess we need at this point, we need a motion. Does anyone on the board wish to make a motion for this application?
I would like to make a motion, we approve DBA twenty dash zero 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 two five. And also grant the sidewalk waiver. And I'm hoping to amendments if I miss something. No? Okay, that's my motion then.
Okay, Cheryl Bethia.
Correct, and I believe it was zero 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 two five, correct?
What, the, the, yes, it's ZBA.
Instead of five.
Zero 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 two five, that's correct.
Yes, my, I, yes, I accept.
Thank you. Bruce McCracken.
Yes.
Joel Reese.
Yes.
Alan Rich.
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal.
Yes.
Robert Shepherd.
Yes.
Rich Prokanic, since Mr. Thomas missed most of it, could you please vote?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
I now return the baton to you.
Are we, are we ready to move on to the next application? Ready, Mr. Thomas?
Please mute it again.
Where is Bob Thomas?
Bob, Bob Thomas is still muted. He muted, Bob.
Did you see even there?
All we see is his drapes and his furniture. Maybe we should continue with Mr. Shippen.
Yeah, Dan, if that's okay with you, why don't we do that?
Sure, I'd see some movement. There he is. Why don't we bring on counsel and his professionals as well as the objective's counsel in the meantime?
Okay.
If you would like me to make some comments before we start, I would be happy to do that.
Yeah, why, why don't you do that while, while I'm bringing in the, the applicant, people are going to be speaking. So just, just to preface it real quick, we do have a lot of people here for this hearing, a number of people who weren't here in previous hearings. We felt it was important for Dan as the board attorney to give a little bit, a very brief kind of overview of what a zoning board hearing is, what the zoning board's functions and powers are, and kind of how the proceedings go at a zoning board hearing, just so everybody, the public, the applicant and the, and the members of the public understand, you know, how we're proceeding on this. So I'll turn it over to Dan as I bring in the applicant representatives.
Sure, thank you, Mark. So for, for the members who were not here previously or the members of the public who were not here previously, this is a continuation of an application seeking a conditional use variance to permit a house of worship in the agricultural zone. The board has conducted two prior meetings, one over the first twenty twenty and the other one was October the fifteenth, twenty twenty. So this is now the third public meeting for this application. As a matter of procedure, the applicant is currently presenting his case to the board. The applicant will produce witnesses who will testify as to specifics of the proposed development, for instance, engineering, architecture, traffic, et cetera. Each witness will be called in turn. Once the witness concludes the direct examination conducted by the applicant's counsel, the board and its professionals will have an opportunity to ask questions of the witness specific to the testimony provided. For instance, if the architect testifies that the facade will be constructed of brick and the board is interested in knowing the color of the brick, the board will follow up with questions regarding the color of the brick. The questions are to be relevant, that's the point. Following the board's questioning, there are attorneys representing abutting property owners who will be given the first opportunity to ask additional questions. Ask you to listen carefully as those attorneys may ask a question you want answered. After the attorneys have completed their questioning of the witness and the members of the public will be given the opportunity to ask questions relevant to the witness's testimony. This procedure will continue for each witness until all witnesses have been presented. I emphasize this portion of the proceeding is aimed at gathering facts, i.e. the color of the brick, not for one to provide their opinion, I don't like red brick. At the conclusion of all evidence, which will not likely happen tonight, the public will be given the opportunity to provide sworn testimony of their own. That is, the members of the public will be given the opportunity to express their opinion either for or against the application and why. Please remember, the Board of Adjustment is a quasi judicial board, which means it acts like a court of law. All persons presenting this evening must comport themselves accordingly. Please respect the volunteer board members. Please respect the applicant who has the right to seek this relief and please respect the other members of the public who have the right to participate. With that, Mark, I'll turn it over to applicant's counsel and he can begin.
I think I've, Mr. Lanford is, is in. Just so you know, so you're aware, Mr. Lanford, I brought in Mitch Arndman. It's my understanding that he'll be presenting testimony and let me know if somebody else should be brought in. I also brought in the opposing counsel, Ms. Bale and Ms. Narick, excuse me if I mispronounced your name, but I brought in the opposing attorneys as well. So you're on, Mr. Lanford. It looks like he's having some technical issues.
He's still muted.
So, Mr. Lanford, if you're having technical issues, I would suggest you log out completely and come back in. So Chairman Thomas, are you, are you functional? Can you hear us and can you unmute so we can see if we can hear you?
Mitch, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
Okay. I'm just making sure because I didn't see the other two attorneys either. I wasn't sure if the problem was on our side that we couldn't hear Mr. Lanford because I don't see Martina or Jennifer, I don't see their faces either, so I wasn't sure if it was something we had wrong over here.
You hear me and see me though?
Yeah, I've been able to see and hear, oh, there's Martina, I see Martina. Hi, Martina. Okay, so, all right, I was just making sure because all four of you came on together and you were the only person I could see, so I wasn't sure if they're, Jennifer, can you hear me okay? You're kind of muffled, we can't really hear you.
Let me try to lower my volume a little bit.
Oh, that's better, that's better. Yeah.
Okay.
And Martina, can you talk just so we can make sure, are you okay before you start giving?
Yes. How is this, can you hear me?
We can hear, okay, so we can see and hear everybody, we'll just wait for Mr. Lanford to get back on, it must have been something on his side. Thank you for participating.
Can't unmute it.
I can hear you, Bob. I can hear you right now.
You just came back on and in theory I should be muted.
That's okay, we, I wouldn't touch anything because we can see and hear you just fine right now.
Well, we'll see what happens. I don't know if this is just mine or if there's more issues elsewhere, but I guess Lanford's having one too.
Yeah, you're okay, so if you just want to, you know, keep where you're at, you'll be fine.
I'll leave it the way it is, it's what happened last time, you just all stopped moving and froze and everything went. And then I got the picture and I got your sound and I couldn't, couldn't get unmuted. It just changed again, are you still hearing me?
Yeah, I can hear you, I can hear you.
Okay.
We can see and hear you just fine. On the desk and step away, don't touch it. Everything's fine.
So the technical issues are on the applicant right now.
I think so, I just brought in Mr. Lanford again. So, Mr. Lanford, it looks like, I'm guessing you're still having issues. You could watch, I think you can call in on the, I think you can watch as an attendee and call in via the phone. That seems to work sometimes.
Mark, Pete's trying to call in now. Mark?
Yep.
If you're looking for his number, I just lost it, we're letting him in. It should end in 9655.
Okay, I'm looking.
That is his cell, so I can't swear that's where he's calling in from.
Oh, he's gonna have to, he's gonna have to tell us what number, we're gonna have to somehow find, oh, here he is.
Raise his hand, you could see him.
That's a good point, I think I got him here.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, yep.
Okay. All right, let me see if I can make this work. Are we all ready to start?
We're getting feedback. Turn off your computer.
Hello?
Hello? Hello?
Are you getting feedback now?
Big time.
Yes.
Yes.
Let me, give me two or three minutes, let me try another computer. Can you hear me now?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, I think I'm in.
Yeah, I'm getting an echo. Oh, well, we can see you. Yes, the turn off his computer mic.
I turned off my phone, so I should not have any interference from my phone, am I clear now?
Yes.
All right. Here we go. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Peter Lanford appearing on behalf of the applicant. I don't know what happened with the technical problems with, I have never had an issue with this township previously, but I, we're here and now ready to go. I thank Mr. Leggano for making an opening statement concerning a little bit of the history of this project. I do want to spend a couple of minutes going over what transpired at the previous hearings, since we have not had a meeting on this matter in about four months. This is an application, as Mr. Leggano said, for a approval of a house of worship, which is a conditional use in the A-zone. The house of worship will be 21,000 square feet on a parcel of land that is 15 plus acres, almost 16 acres. We are seeking certain variances in conjunction with this application. The bulk variances that we were originally seeking were a side yard setback variance, where 75 feet was required, and we proposed 67.9 feet, and a rear yard setback of 200 feet, and we proposed 50 feet. We also are here for a use variance, because this is a conditional use, and we do not meet certain conditions of the conditional use standards. Those conditions are off-street parking, where we are providing 157 spaces, and the township ordinance, based on their formula, as this board is well aware, where we have to take every square foot of the facility and assume it is occupied, requires up to 457 parking spaces. We also have a buffer requirement, there is a requirement of a 15-foot buffer surrounding the entire property. We have buffered part of it, and we have not buffered other parts of it, and we had presented some testimony previously concerning the issue of the buffering. The third condition that we did not meet was the location of the parking, which is supposed to be in the rear of the main structure. As the board may recall, when we started these hearings and presented the testimony of Mr. Aardman, our site engineer, we had indicated that we originally proposed the temple in what was the open field closer towards South Middle Bush Road. If we had continued forward with that application, we would have eliminated the setback variances, and also the location of the parking, because the parking would have been behind the structure. The reason that we are proposing to construct the temple in its present location was as a result of discussions with township staff, and their concern about preserving the scenic corridor, and they suggested that we move the the house of worship further back and to the south of the property, so that it is somewhat screened from South Middle Bush Road. So that's what the proposal is. We also, at the previous hearings, presented the testimony of Yogesh Mistry, our architect, who described the facility, both from the exterior and interior of the facility, and also presented the testimony of Mr. Aardman on two evenings. Since the last meeting, we have been in communication with council for the adjoining property owners, both Ms. Bailey, who represents the Snyder's, and Mr. Azadorian, who represented the Warwick's. Mr. Azadorian has since left the firm that was representing the Warwick's, and they have, have, now have replacement council, and I think her name is pronounced Ms. Marriage, I have not spoken to her, I just had correspondence from her. However, in the last couple of months, we have had numerous meetings between both all the attorneys and Mr. Aardman and myself. We've had a Zoom meeting with the property owners concerning this project. As a result of those meetings, we have come up with certain modifications to the site plan, which came to us as a result of input from these adjoining property owners. So this evening, what I'm going to do is have Mr. Aardman present testimony as to the changes that we are making to the site as a result of these meetings, and also there were some board questions at the earlier meetings, and they also expressed some concerns, and we took those concerns and incorporated them into the changes. As we go forward, and procedurally, our initial application was for a preliminary and final site plan approval, as well as the conditional use variance and bulk variance. Obviously, since we don't have a fully engineered revised plan, once we get to the end of the line here, we would be asking only for preliminary site plan, and not final site plan, since we will in fact have to revise the plans in accordance with the sketches that Mr. Aardman will share with you this evening. Having said all of that, I would like to call Mr. Aardman as a witness, he has been sworn in previously and has testified previously, and I would ask Mr. Healy to give him the screen so he can present the exhibits.
Mr. Aardman, you remain under oath. Thank you, my licenses are still current. Thank you.
Okay, he's good to go.
All right, Mr. Aardman, you heard my comments, and since the last hearing in this matter, have you and I participated on some numerous Zoom meetings with either the attorneys for the adjoining property owners, and/or the attorneys and their respective clients?
Yes, we have.
Okay, and as a result of those meetings, and some of the concerns that they had, did you in fact make some revisions to the site plan?
Yes, I did, and you also stated, and some of the board's concerns as well.
Okay. Can you very briefly pull up, first of all, the original plan that was submitted to the board, and which the board was reviewing at the last hearing, and in about two minutes, just since there has been such a lapse of time, refresh the board's recollection of what we were proposing initially?
Certainly, let's see if we share screen. Can everybody see the screen?
Okay. It's visible.
Thank you. Okay. So what we have, this is the landscape plan, that was in the packet that was submitted, and the building, as was stated, 21-plus-thousand-square-foot temple is in the southeastern part of the property, it was 50 feet off of this rear property line, and the 67 feet off of the right side property line, with the parking area in front of it. Our store owner detention basin on the southern side here, I described the wetlands area in the far southern corner of the property, which we will not be impacting the wetlands or its property at all. The existing house in the center portion of that part of the property, and the auxiliary parking area in the northwestern part of the property. The Snyder Farm is to the right here, to the east and to the south side, and the Warwick property is as the driveway goes to the front of the property along the existing driveway. So here, I'm pointing at the right part of my plan, which is a match line. So basically, South Middle Bush is where I'm pointing from here, running north-south. This is the location of the existing driveway, and this is the Warwick house on the adjoining lot. This driveway comes down into the site, and I'm moving my cursor, so we match up again with the existing driveway along the Warwick property, which we were moving for fire code, a sufficient width to come into this lane. And you can see plantings that we provided in the back of the neighboring property. So, in a nutshell, that was the layout that we have. And the proposed septic system for the site is in the field area. The distinction between the wooded area, so drawing the line up and down the plan, is there, and to the south, and the open field area is in the right portion of the plan, and that's where the proposed septic system will be placed.
Thank you, Mr. Aardman, now can you bring up the screen with the revisions that we are proposing this evening?
Is that sharing?
Not yet.
Okay. That should be shared.
Now we're good.
Very good. Okay, let me reduce this a little, so everybody can see the full property this far. All right, so this, and we should get this in on the record. This is exhibit overall plan, option A, with a date of 12/18/20, and it has three revisions, with revision three, the last revision.
Mitch, you need to speak into the microphone, we're losing you.
Okay. So this is exhibit overall plan, option A. The plan date is 12/18/20, it has three revisions, and the last revision date is 2/12/21.
Okay. And in looking at the plan, I assume that most of the revisions that we are proposing are highlighted in red?
That is correct.
All right, and if you would take the board through the property, starting at South Middle Bush Road and moving back to where the house of worship is located, can you review the changes that we are making, and for the record, I did submit to the board on February 12, 2021, a letter outlining these changes, which hopefully will be, was part of your package, but we will go over them, and Mr. Aardman will discuss each and every one of the changes.
Very good. So the first change that's of note is to move the driveway over, and that was raised by the Warwick's, and also I believe by by the chairman, that the location, I didn't feel, obviously for the neighbor was optimal, to get that traffic out of the way, and for better site distance on South Middle Bush Road. So we moved that driveway over, a minimum of 300 feet from the property line to the north. The new driveway location is as I show here, and obviously the sign would move along to stay next to that one driveway. That driveway will be used for all construction vehicles as well, so at the beginning of the project, we will take that existing driveway out and use the new lane, the new drive for construction access. As I previously testified, as requested by Mr. House, that will be posted for no parking along the full length of that entrance driveway. And that's, those are noted on this schematic plan. For the driveway that we are removing, as we show in the bubbled area here, and as I have noted, we're going to replant that area to provide additional screening for the Warwick property, even with pulling the driveway that far away, we've agreed to that additional planting in that area. A question that came up from the Snyder's was to make sure that, from their driveway access, the street trees that we're proposing are outside the site triangle. So we've added standard county site distance line in the site triangle from the Snyder access drive, and we're showing that our street trees are outside of the view area, so not to block there, getting out on the South Middle Bush.
Mr. Aardman, for some reason, I'm having difficulty understanding you again. You were good for a little while, but now it seems like it's not working as well. Can you try a little harder?
I would do that any better. Yep. Okay. The next item is the parking lot, which is behind the Warwick's, as well as behind the adjoining residence. We've agreed to add for that line of cars that is facing their property, an evergreen hedge along that full row of parking. We've also agreed to have that parking a minimum of 100 feet from that property line. So those are those two items. So those are those two items. As we go back onto the property, we've shifted the full building, the full proposed temple away from the rear yard setback an additional 80 feet. So 200 is proposed. As Mr. Lanford said, we were at 50 feet originally. We're now at 130 feet. We've also moved it so that we comply with the side yard setback. We'll be a minimum of 75 feet off the side yard setback, so we eliminate that variance. One item that was critical to Mr. Snyder was to have good landscaping and buffering along the critical sides of the proposed temple. So on the northerly side here, our common boundary line, there are trees in that area. So we've agreed to supplement that area with additional pine trees in that location. Those will all be a minimum of 6 to 8 feet. We've also provided a berm in the back section here of the property. And we went back and forth on the, on that height of that berm. And at this point, we have that a full 10-foot-high berm with 8-foot pine trees on top. So that'll really provide a nice screen there for a total height of 18 feet of screening of the back of that property. One of the other elements that was important to Mr. Snyder was fencing, really for the purpose of people wandering off the property and into his farm field. We didn't feel that was too likely, but you never know. People on their timeout could start wandering. It's a nice property, so we agree to that. It will be a deer-type fence, as he suggested. And it will go the eastern or rear property line up to the wetlands. And it will also head up to South Middle Bush Road along the full side length of this line I'm pointing to on my screen now. So those two full legs will get that full height fence, Warwick area. Check my notes in that letter that Peter said he took to the board as well. See any other points we have there. In the back of the residence as well, we had some plantings in that area. And we've agreed that those plantings will be 6 to 8-foot minimum height. And we'll supplement any gaps in bare areas in the existing wooded area back there with those evergreen trees. Some other technical issues that we've agreed to as well, and I testified at the original meeting, but just want to put on the record again. As we've seen, if this per lot is what we're calling the auxiliary lot, and those lights will be on a separate timer, with separate circuits. And that will only be turned on when necessary. So on a standard evening, with the, as you're familiar with most religious organizations, you have your regular attendees in the larger events. The regular attendees, we expect to fit in the main front parking lot. So those lights will not go on at that time. And all the lights will be on a timer to go off after services are complete. We've also agreed to abide with any federal guidelines regarding tree clearing limitations. Some apply to the different times of the year that you can remove trees and will naturally comply with that requirement. So those are the items that were in Peter's letter and specifically on the plan. I do want to hit a letter, a supplementary letter that was addressed to Peter, but halfway to the board from Mrs. Bell, that had a couple other items that I just want to get on the record as well that we agreed to. And I'll help us cite them by number in her letter to make sure we're all keeping track. So item six in the letter talked about the floor for the proposed temple. If the board remembers, it was going to be all white. That was a preference of basically the organization to have that. They agreed that just the front facade would be white, but that the facade facing the Snyder would be beige or orange in color. Also in agreement was that the maintaining trees and the buffers typically is a one to two-year time for maintaining all plantings. And we've agreed to a five-year requirement for maintaining all those plantings. And I think I think with that, I've hit all the points on the revised plan as well as the other points that were in the letters that I described.
One other, Mr. Arndman, one other point of clarification. There are some rather significant trees along the Warwick property. We are going to be preserving all of those trees, and we've agreed to that. And we've also agreed that where there are gaps in the view shed of the Warwick property to our site, that we would supplement that, those gaps with some evergreens in that area also. Is that correct?
That's correct. And just from a site design perspective, as you heard Peter say, we will be asking for this preliminary site plan design. One of the key components, bring up the detention basin, would stay as designed. We reviewed the impervious area. And so we're going to be removing a driveway and adding this one. So that's pretty much a swap of pavement. It would be a little bit more to, for the swing to add, but that will be reduced by moving the whole project up towards South Middle Bush. So it was basically a swap on the amount of impervious area. So the detention basin will stay in the same place as it is. The drainage will continue to flow to that basin as we previously designed. And the existing house will continue to remain. That's shown in blue outlined on my plan.
Okay, a couple other points, Mr. Arndman. The, when you referenced the existing house, the driveway that was adjacent to the Warwick property was the access to the existing house. Now, the access to the existing house obviously will be the new driveway and then going through the parking lot that we are constructing. So again, to reduce the impervious coverage in any portions of the driveway, the old driveway that are not necessary will also be eliminated. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Now, you also made the statement that this plan has not been fully engineered yet. We're sharing these revisions with the board this evening. But in addition to the meetings and conferences that we had with the adjoining property owners and their council, did you in fact have a conversation with the township's consulting engineer to generally review the changes that we are proposing?
Yes, I did. We basically discussed this.
And you described to him the changes. And based on your discussion with him, you're comfortable that your statements and comments concerning the stormwater management system, which will remain in the same place, can adequately handle the stormwater management for this site?
That's right.
Bear with me one second. There are numerous letters that are going, that have gone back and forth. And I just want to make sure that we have covered everything in all the letters that have gone back and forth. And if I missed something, I'm sure Ms. Bailey will point that out to me. Oh, we also represented that we will only be removing the trees that are necessary for the construction of the House of Worship and for the parking lots. And that all the other trees on the site that we can preserve, we will in fact preserve. Is that correct?
That's correct.
There was also a discussion, not only are we removing the existing driveway, there is a pipe along South Middle Bush Road, which allows the driveway to connect to South Middle Bush Road. As part of the removal of the driveway, that pipe will also be removed so that there will be better flow of water along South Middle Bush Road. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And I know at the beginning, just to clarify, there will be new street trees proposed along South Middle Bush Road pursuant to either the county or the township requirements, except where they may affect the site distance of the Snyder driveway.
That's correct. And that site line we show, we will not be in their sight line.
Now, circling back in conjunction with this application, there were numerous staff reports that were generated with respect to the original plan. We had a report of Mr. Healy dated January 8, 2020, which I believe was his second revision. And he had some comments concerning the lighting. And we will be revising the lighting to comply with Mr. Healy's comment?
Yeah, I think, I believe there's a May 2020 review as well. But yes, we will be in compliance with the height requirement and the foot handle requirement. And we will not be seeking any waivers or variances.
Okay. You've also had an opportunity to review the report of the consulting engineer from Mr. Russo dated May 2020. Are there any things, anything in that report, or is there anything that we cannot comply with?
No, again, my prior testimony, we agreed to comply with those. I had stated that we had had a chance from a prior seminal to upgrade some things on the plan to limit those comments. So we have no issue complying with that report.
Okay, and again, for the record, since it's been some months since we've been before the board, we did in fact already obtain a wetlands delineation with respect to this subject property. And that wetlands delineation came from the DEP and was dated December 11, 2019. And the wetlands that you show on the rear portion of the property are the only wetlands that are on this site. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and is there any, are there buffers associated with those wetlands? Again, we discussed this previously, but just to have it all covered this evening, since it's been a while.
Yes, there's a 50-foot buffer. The wetlands is the dotted area. The buffer line is outside that, and we will not be touching either the wetlands or the buffer.
Now, as a result of these changes, we have in fact eliminated one of the site, one of the setback variances. Is that correct?
That's correct. The side yard setback, we're now in compliance with 75 feet.
And the original request for a rear yard setback was a 50-foot setback where the ordinance required 200 feet, correct?
Correct.
And as a result of this revision, the relocation of the building, the new rear yard setback is 130 feet?
That's right.
So we're still in variance, but we've moved the building significantly forward.
That's correct.
And again, Mr. Arndman, we had originally proposed a sign, and we are still proposing the same sign, but it is in a new location.
That's correct. Along with the move of the driveway, we moved that sign alongside the drive, and it does meet the setback requirements. Once again, the size need, does need the variance for the total square footage, but the sign face itself would meet the 25-foot maximum.
Thank you, Mr. Arndman. Mr. Chairman, I have no further questions of Mr. Arndman at this time.
Okay, thank you. Does the board have questions for Mr. Arndman?
Yes.
I do have a couple of questions.
I do too.
I have one quick question for Mark, and then you can answer a few questions. So with this amended or marked-up plan, does this meet the checklist requirements for preliminary approval?
I think that the way to answer that is that they've submitted a fully engineered site plan originally. And that this is a slight amendment to that. The testimony that was provided was that the change in the impervious is such that Mr. Arndman's testifying that it's not going to change his stormwater plan significantly. And I think they've provided enough test, through testimony and through this exhibit, enough information that it's clear the, you know, with the sum of the fully engineered site plans plus the testimony and this exhibit, I think it's enough information for the board to grant preliminary.
Okay, thank you. I have a few other questions, but I think it was Alan. You can go ahead.
I have a question.
Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, so between the two letters we received, are the, are the two sets of counsel, are they now in an agreement with the items in their letters? Or is there still some disagreement from the opposing counsel?
Mr. Reese, I'll answer that. You, Ms. Bailey will have an opportunity to cross-examine Mr. Arndman. What you just heard are the revisions proposed by the applicant. So I would, I would square it out of the way in your own mind. As those are the revisions being set forth on the record by the applicant, Ms. Bailey will have the opportunity to question Mr. Arndman if she so chooses.
And the other, there's a second opposing counsel as well.
Any, the objecting counsel or the counsel for the adjoining neighbors will have the ability, as soon as the board is done, to question Mr. Arndman.
Okay, other questions?
Yeah, I had a couple other ones, a little bit more on the technical side about the plans. Could, Mr. Arndman, could you just clarify the buffer variance? I know you had gone back and revised the plans and increased the buffer. I'm just a little unclear where that variance still fits on this application.
So there's a technical requirement for a full width variance around the entire property. We are, it's our testimony, as I previously did, that the existing woodland area, especially as I'm pointing here between the field and the woods, serves the purpose of that requirement, but not to the letter of the requirement. And that would be for other sections of the property as well. The southerly property line, that's township open space there. It is fully wooded, but we're not proposing per se a new buffer in that location.
For the record, Mr. Pekanik, just, I think it would probably make sense to read into the record what the ordinance requirement is, which is a 15-foot buffer consisting of double staggered row of evergreen trees planted at a maximum of 10 feet on center with a minimum planting height of 6 to 8 feet or approved equivalent. A mix of evergreen and deciduous shrubs and a 6-foot-high solid board-on-board fence or 25-foot-wide heavily landscaped buffer with triple staggered rows of evergreen trees planted at a maximum of, I think it was 10 feet. So that is what the ordinance requirement is. And as we, I think, indicated in the initial hearing, if we were to, in certain areas, do that, we would be taking out trees in order to plant trees. And the trees that we would be removing would be more mature than what we would be planting. Also, obviously, we can't comply with the ordinance to the extent that there is a wetlands in the rear corner of the property. We're not allowed to touch that, so we need a deviation from that. And what we have done as a result of the input from Snyder's is And what we have done as a result of the input from Snyder's is we have provided the buffer to the rear, in essence, consistent with the ordinance, the buffer to the side of the house of worship and to the Snyder property. We have planted, we have maintained the existing tree line that's there and have agreed to supplement that tree line with additional plantings. And again, proposed a fence, which Mr. Snyder requested as a deer fence, and nothing that is extremely unsightly, because again, this is a rural area, and we would run the fence along the rear of the, of the property line up to the wetlands and along the left side of the property line adjacent to the building and the parking where the people would congregate.
Thank you for that clarity. With the new relocated driveway, some modifications to the parking lot, do you, do you know how many trees you will need to remove to construct that?
The relocated driveway, the good part about that, that's through the open field. So there will be no tree location for the bulk of that driveway. We will then cut through a section of the wooded area, so it will be maybe 100 to 150 foot of the driveway there, that will go through the wooded area. But in the original plan, where we were expanding the existing driveway, that's part of that was required as well.
And any tree replacement required, what would be replaced on site? Did I understand you correctly?
We're not going to meet the full township requirement on site. We will have more than we originally had. Give me one minute. So at the original plan, the tree replacement required was 492 trees, and we were showing 107 on site. With this plan, there'll be less replacement required because by moving the building up, we'll have some less disturbance. And with the additional plantings we provided, we'll have more provided. But there still will be a difference in those two numbers, and we will work with staff to figure out where on site we can fit some. But my assumption is they will not all be able to fit on site, and we will contribute to the township tree fund for the remainder.
Okay, I just have that tree replacement section in front of me, and it says that the applicant shall make all reasonable attempts to provide all required replacement trees on the site. Understandably, under the, the first application, the first set of plans, there were 492 replacement trees, which is a staggering amount of trees to try to find a home for on the site. But with the relocated driveway, I would be very curious to understand how many new replacement trees are required for those that are removed. And it appears that, I guess that the northern property line, northeastern property line, the right property line, is pretty open, and it could accommodate a significant amount of trees, maybe all the replacement trees required for those that are being removed.
Along this line here, as I pointed?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we can find a home for many. I think the work, I think Mr. Thomas brought up what we talked about, moving the drive, that to plant trees along that drive and create an alley, if you will, like old farm properties have, that whole drive would be a location, and then along the property line as well. I just know it's a pretty good amount of trees, so I'm not sure for the record, I can state that they deal all tree on site, but I agree with the, with you and the ordinance that to the extent practical, we will try and put them on the property.
Okay, thank you. And my last question is more of recollection. I don't specifically recall, I know you touched on it on your previous testimony, but were you accounting for any land bank parking on the site?
We are not.
Okay. Thank you. That's, that's all the questions I have.
Any other questions?
I have a comment, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Lanford, perhaps as part of the final site plan, you can give us a more detailed landscaping plan with the, with the proposed trees to be removed and the replacement trees, and where those replacement trees can go on site?
We certainly can do that, and we are required to do that. And the other thing I just may want to add, I mean, we'll, we'll be glad to put as many trees as we can on the property, but, and maybe Mr. Healy wants to chime in. One, one of the things that prompted the relocation of the house of worship from the middle of the property, closer to South Middle Bush Road to the rear, was the scenic corridor. And to protect the view shed of, of the scenic corridor along South Middle Bush Road. And the minute you start artificially planting trees and putting them in there, maybe it is going to destroy what people are trying to protect. So I think, you know, we'll be happy to put trees in there, but I think there has to be a conversation that we don't really destroy what we intended to protect by just throwing trees in there and creating a forest when this was a farm field that you're joining site as a farm field. And I think that ambiance in that corridor was looking to be protected. So I mean, Mr. Healy can chime in on that, but, you know, we'll be glad to do whatever you want, but we ought to be careful that we're not throwing trees in there and destroying what we're intending to protect.
Well, I'll just say that I know that Mr. Ordman's firm has a landscape architect, so I'm sure if the board was to place some type of condition regarding that issue, you're trying to relocate as many trees back on the site as possible, and in a way that, that balances screening of the, of the building with trying to preserve the open nature of the scenic corridor. You know, trying to balance those two objectives, and then the board can look at the details of that in final.
Okay, any other questions?
The landscape architect to be present if we grant a preliminary tonight, if that person could appear for final approval.
We can do that, sure.
He would, he would have to present testimony as to landscaping plan.
Yeah, and for the record, there's no, just, Mr. Lanford, you still have a few experts to present, correct?
Yeah, we're, we're not going to finish this evening. Hopefully, we will get to another witness. I still have traffic testimony and planning testimony to present, so we will be back at this again.
Right, I have just one quick question for Mr. Ordman, and forgive me if I missed it. How many parking spaces result with the new plan?
It would be the same number of parking spaces. We didn't gain or lose any.
All right, thank you.
And if I just, just for the record, I testified previously, as Mr. Healy had his report, there were conditions for the scenic corridor ordinance. And without going point by point, it's basically in regards to signage, stormwater, landscaping, utilities, and building, which I don't wish it. With the adjustment of the placement, I believe my testimony would still stand that we addressed the intent of the scenic corridor provisions in that chapter, and was providing attention appropriately, screening appropriately. I showed pictures at the previous hearing from South Middle Bush, and that the signage was designed appropriately for this location. So I don't think that the change of plan would change my testimony on the driving.
Okay, any other questions?
I just have one, I'd like one clarification. So I understand that the, the road entrance into the property is going to be relocated. So is the, the access to the other two properties, will, will, there'll be another road, or those existing, they have existing access?
They have existing. So we've been talking about the Snyder farm, they have their own access drive, and the Warwick's have their own access drive. So they, they were never part of the existing access drive.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? I think, I guess the next part of this would be to open up to the other lawyers representing clients for the cross-examination, and where we can get all the information available before we open up to the public.
Yeah, let me, Mr. Chairman, let me just make a quick suggestion again to the public. After the, the attorneys ask Mr. Ordman their questions, we, we are going to be asking, opening it up to the public to ask questions of Mr. Ordman's testimony and the exhibit. We are getting some questions in the chat. That's not the place for, for questions. I'll just say to the board members, not to read the chat, the, the testimony should be what you're hearing in the webinars call. And if the members of the public have any questions to ask Mr. Ordman, please raise your hands, and at the appropriate time, we'll call on you to ask those questions.
Okay, then we'll open to the attorneys if they're present.
Good evening. If, Mr. Legan, I don't know if you had an order in mind, but I'm happy to go first.
Yes, whoever decides to go first.
Sure, thank you. Thanks very much for the record. I'm Martina Bailey with the Law Offices of Gerald Muller, and representing Ray and John Snyder, who own the farm that is on the northeast side of the site. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and ladies and gentlemen of the board. Thank you for this opportunity. And if I may, I just wanted to address Mr. Rice's question about the letters. And I thought it might be helpful actually to have my letter, which followed Mr. Lanford's letter of February 12, and entered into evidence. I would actually ask that I be permitted to do that.
Ms. Bailey, your letter was submitted. It's already part of the record. The only thing that I would say is that it's really not evidence of anything. So I would ask you to outline your questions to Mr. Ordman, so that way we can get testimony on the record.
Fair enough. So to be clear, you're, you're declining to mark that as an exhibit?
It's already been provided to the board.
Okay. Thank you. And just to address that question, the question was, are the two letters in agreement, Mr. Lanford's letter and my letter, which followed a couple of days later? The purpose of my letter was to point out that there were four, actually five items that we didn't see on Mr. Lanford's letter. And I included those in my list of items. Mr. Ordman covered those, Mr. Lanford and Mr. Ordman covered those additional items. I appreciate that, and I also appreciate that the applicant has been willing to make provisions and meet with us. I also want to be clear, just for the record, that my clients have never waived their right to continue to take the position that they oppose this application. We're not here to frustrate this process or unnecessarily prolong it at all. So I'm going to be very concise in my questioning. I, I think there is some information about this, the revised site plan, that is not entirely clear, that would be beneficial certainly to my clients, but also to the board in making its decision in a fully informed way. So I'll, I'll get straight to the point. This is about a 16-acre lot site area. And I think I saw that the, the area of impervious coverage as a result of the proposed development is, is less than three acres. One of the overriding questions that we've had that really hasn't been fully clarified not to my satisfaction, and certainly not my, my clients and probably many others, is why it is that this design couldn't be done in such a way that doesn't necessitate use variances, which impose a higher burden on the applicant? Because there is a lot of space on this site. It, it seems to me, I think it's obvious looking at this, that what's driving the design, and I think Mr. Ordman has, in our discussions, commented on this as well, what's driving this design is the, the fact that there is an existing dwelling here, that the applicant just wishes to leave where it is. And so initially, that was why we had only a 50-foot setback. And you're still requesting a variance, the applicant is still requesting a variance from the rear, from the 200-foot setback. Why is it, and I would like Mr. Ordman to comment on this and explain, why is it that this development couldn't be designed in such a way as to avoid those variance requirements, given the amount of space on this site?
Certainly. So we, I think we have, I kicked that test in order before, I'd be happy to again. So the side yard setback, again, we meet that criteria. For the rear yard, it would be pushing the proposed building, house of worship, as well as the parking forward onto the site. That could be done while still leaving this building. It would just all get pushed forward. By doing that, we would really need to push the secondary parking lot forward as well. By doing that, we start to get into the area that we believe would be more into the view shed of South Middle Bush. So even though we have the screening of the existing wooded area and we're proposing additional, we really wouldn't be able to keep, for the Warwick's, the agreement that we made with them to keep that 100-plus feet for that distance. We're not required to have anywhere near that distance for parking. Typically, we could be 25 to 40 feet off the property line and still get the required buffer in, in that area, but we've agreed to that 100. So we're really balancing the view shed from South Middle Bush, your neighbor, who we work long and hard with, who provide the buffers and the berms that have grown over time, and our client's been willing to do that. And so this, we think, is a good medium for good site design with balancing all those aspects.
Was there any consideration to either relocating the existing dwelling, which is possible, I gather, you can simply lift the entire thing and move it somewhere else, or demolishing it, and if necessary, building another accessory structure somewhere else in order to be able to move the, the institute itself more centrally into the rear area on this lot?
Again, the desire is to keep that, to move it while moving buildings is possible. It's, it's not, not, it's easier said than done. And again, we think this layout balances all the design options on this property and works for this, well for this site.
I have a couple of follow-up questions on some other exit, other aspects, but I, sorry, just to clarify and finish this thought. So I think, I think what you've said in the past, and what I'm hearing, is that this design is, those design is really driven for architectural design reasons rather than for any engineering reasons.
I don't think that's what I've been saying, and that's not the point. It's from an engineering standpoint, it's from a site design standpoint altogether, we think it balances all the neighbors, the view shed, plus all the neighbors we have.
Okay. I had just a couple of follow-up questions on more specific aspects, and you'd refer to this as a, as a, or Mr. Healy had referred to this as a fully engineered, the initial submission was a fully engineered site plan, and, and these revisions don't affect that, which is why this board can grant preliminary approval at this instance. Does that fully engineered status extend to the septic? And I wonder if you can just comment on the septic design and what the status is of the county approval that you've sought for that?
Yeah, so we worked with a separate consultant for that septic design. That is pending right now until we get through this hearing. So we have not approached the Board of Health at the county yet to finalize that design until we get through this hearing. They were fully witnessed soil tests that were out there in the specific location of the septic system. So they are passing permeability log tests at that location. So we just wanted to make sure we got through this part of the process before we finalize. So we just wanted to make sure we got through this part of the process before we finalize that application.
Is a final septic design generally considered part of a fully engineered plan?
Not necessarily. Having the passing logs and perks is a definite requirement and having the layout of the system which we have.
And do you expect to have that final plan? How soon would you expect to have that? Can that be submitted for the, for the final?
Yeah, I would say that if we receive preliminary site plan and the use approval for this project, that we would move ahead with that septic design approvals. My clients would like to keep this project moving, so they definitely want to get all the approvals again.
Okay. I had a question about the existing dwelling and the height. I, I recall that this came up before. And that the height wasn't available at the time. Can you remind us or tell us what the height of that existing dwelling is?
That's a good, I may have to get back to you on that. It's like a two and a half story standard building right there. I don't know that I have that data right now, but I can find that.
Okay, and just, just one more question on the, the runoff on this newly relocated driveway here. What provisions are being made for the runoff? And that impervious, that's going to be an impervious, that's an asphalt driveway. Is that correct?
That's correct. So as much as possible that water, we are going to pick up in our drainage system and pipe to the detention basin. Some of that, as the existing driveway did, it sheet flowed across. Didn't help my point of my plan. Some of the existing driveway also, heat flowed across and down to this easterly corner of the property. So there was already some flow in that area. So we will balance the drainage to make sure there is no more and that we meet the stormwater criteria for that roadway. A part of what we did previously will continue is that we did some basically environmental plantings in the back of the site here. Which would help with stormwater runoff specifically water quality provisions. And we would continue those and any other enhancements that we would need.
Okay, there was a concern that this runoff runs off and actually floods and drains into the Snyder's property. And it sounds like it drains downward, but how much of that drainage actually goes? You know, goes into the field further up closer to Middle Bush Road.
There's a drainage divide. Pretty much along the edge of the existing drive through the property. Where everything to the plan left or the south goes to the wetlands there in that corner. And then the field and the bulk of that area presently flows across down into the corner. And it's flowed that way for as long as the field has been there. And that is my, what I was trying to get at is that we would try and, we will balance those drainage patterns. So that no additional flow goes to that easterly corner to the Snyder's. And there's no net impact on stormwater in that location.
Yes, and the drainage that you're piping down to the detention basement, are those, those will be under, will those be underground pipes?
That's correct.
Okay. And those will come off the, this driveway or where will those, can you show us roughly where those will be?
Yeah, so some there may be, we'll call swells or drainage ditches along the driveway, some might be piped. And then the combination of the pipes that we had previously shown in the upper and the secondary parking lot, as well as the building. Will continue to be piped to the detention basin. And that basin was basically approved by the DNR Canal Commission in our first middle as well as the township's consulting engineer. And we're going to follow the same patterns. So we fully expect no issues with approvals on that basin.
Thank you. I have nothing further.
Okay, do we have any further questions from attorneys?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That is how you pronounce my name for those that attempted to pronounce it. I appreciate the effort on that one. Everybody mispronounces my name, unfortunately. I'm used to it. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, I represent. The Warwick's who own the adjacent property. Along across from where the Snyder's are located. There was a weird question whether or not the items in our letter were addressed. And I just want to get at the outset, for the most part, they were addressed. I just had a couple of follow up questions with regard to the testimony that Mr. Arben presented. For example, you had stated that the existing driveway will be removed as we agreed. And replanted. Can you clarify what you mean by replanted?
There will be a series of evergreens that will be placed in that location, minimum six foot height.
Okay, great. And this might make the story, but this might be a question for the applicant. Your engineer testified that the timer for the parking lot lights will be turned off after services are complete. Know what time approximately services are completed or would that be a question for the applicant?
That would be the applicant.
Okay, thank you. In terms of what Ms. Bailey had alluded to with respect to the septic approval from the Department of Health. Would you agree that that would have to be approved prior to final approval granted by this board?
That's not accurate.
Yeah, we don't, we don't always get that before final, no. It's a condition of approval typically.
Given for final, not just preliminary?
Right.
It obviously has to be approved before we can start construction and before the township lets us start to build. But we can get preliminary or final approval pending the county approval. We also have to get the RCC final approval.
That's correct. That was going to be my next question.
Yeah. So there are, and I think we testified to that as at a previous hearing, but perhaps Mr. Arben can review all the outside agencies that have jurisdiction over this project. And who have, who need to approve it before we can start construction.
Yes, certainly. To take that quickly, we have soil erosion control. We have Somerset County Planning Board and the DNR Canal Commission. The Canal Commission, we were technically complete. And as many of the board members that you may know, we're to catch 22 there. We actually cannot get DNR Canal approval because they wait for the township final approval resolution before they will have their, their actual vote on it. So we are in that, you know, kind of chicken and egg on, on that one. Somerset County will have to satisfy their conditions. And the soil erosion, I think we basically approved, but they will have to review these amendments as well. So we'll submit the changes to them. And again, all those agencies, Peter Sarah, conditions of approval prior to construction.
Thank you, Mr. Arben. And one more follow up question. It was a question from one of the board members with regard to additional planting of trees. And it was referred to that because this is farmland, it would be necessarily a benefit to plant additional trees on the site. Could you just elaborate as to why that would be the case?
Well, I think we, the discussion went back and forth on that. So the ordinance requirement in general is to first see if you can plant all the replacement trees on your property. This is a little particular here, as it was brought up by Mr. Lanford and others. This is a scenic corridor. Part of the corridor is looking over the historic farm fields. So if we planted a series of non, you know, standard or native trees here that didn't reflect the original corridor. That might not satisfy the intention that party orders. So we said my landscape architect would work with Mr. Healy and other board members to see a balance on that. Maybe some of the trees from down the property line would serve as a hedgerow, which, which would be standard in a farm field. But may, maybe not for the entire open space.
Okay, thank you very much for your detailed review on the revisions to the plans. And once again, with values and reserve, I write to contest any other. I was that from, if the board does not see that these items are in agreement with their, just ultimate, just as a method. Nothing further.
Mr. Thomas, before we proceed to the public. I just need to confirm that we have already established how late. What the cutoff period is for services. I know that we've said that the lights in the parking lot will be turned off as soon as services are over. But I, I think that means something different if services are over at eight o'clock at night. Or if they're over at two in the morning. So I, I'd like to know if we've established the, the timeframe for when all services will be concluded. On any particular evening or day.
That has not been established, Mr. Shepherd, because the applicant has not yet testified. That will be established when he testifies. He will be my next witness, whether we start him this evening or at the next meeting. But he will be my next witness after we're concluded with Mr. Arben.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Okay, then, at this point. I guess it's going to be time to open to the public. I just want to remind the public that's listening. Mr. Legana gave a description of what a zoning board hearing is supposed to be. And what your expectations should be for the hearing. And in this case, we're going to be open to the public for questions concerning the testimony that was just given. This evening to this point by the engineer. We're not taking statements or opinions from people. Those can come at a later point. And I will be very strict about that part. To the point of possibly being considered rude. Questions concerning tonight's testimony from the engineer.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we, we do have a member of the public with her hand up. Again, I'll remind the public, if you're on WebEx, you can do the raised hand function or if you're calling in star three. I do see Barbara Lawrence with her hand up, so I'm going to unmute her and allow her to ask questions. Go ahead, Ms. Lawrence.
Thank you, Mark. My name is Barbara Lawrence. I live on South Middle Bush Road, 383 South Middle Bush Road. I've been here for 40 years. I am a former member of the Historic Preservation Commission. And have, including a term as Chair of the Commission. And I will, at a later point, make a statement about the projects overall. But I would like to say, I appreciate Mr. Lanford's comment that they are doing what they can to protect the scenic corridor. This is an important feature of Franklin Township's master plan. Protecting the scenic corridors, historic lands and agricultural historic preservation districts and agricultural lands. And so I, I know it can get confusing. You want to plant more trees, but then maybe you're defeating. You're going around in a circle. You're defeating the purpose of one thing by trying to accommodate another. So I do appreciate that insight into where this is going. I'll speak further at a later time. Thank you.
Okay, we do have a few other members of the public. And Ms. Lawrence, if you could. Click on the hand icon again. After you speak, if you could put your hand down. So that way we call on people one at a time. I have Greg Foster and I'll unmute him at this point for questions. Go ahead, Mr. Foster.
Very good evening. The first thing I have is about the sign that's going to be down by South Middle Bush. Is that a sign that's lit? Is that backlit so that the light comes through the panels? Is that lit from a front floodlight?
It will not be backlit. It will be the second, as you stated, it will be a ground mounted up light on, onto the sign.
Okay, and do you think that that interferes with the scenic look of South Middle Bush? Because I don't remember any other signs there that are lit.
We definitely think it's much more appropriate than a, than a backlit sign. So we think the ground mounted will be just enough to give it directional. Who, obviously going down South Middle Bush, make sure you find this driveway is important. We don't believe it's overlit, so we think it's appropriate and, and as need for this project.
Will that be going out at the same time the parking light lots go out at the end of services?
Yes.
Okay, and while I do appreciate your desire to move the buildings and give the space on the side. We're still about 70 feet from the space in the back. Is there any reason why that building couldn't be moved up 70 more feet?
So again, my testimony, I believe we're starting to get more towards the scenic corridor at that point. And then we're pushing the secondary parking lot more towards the neighbors, the Warwick's and the other neighbors on South Middle Bush to their, to their rear yard. They would have to push up maybe not the full 70 feet, but probably at least 50 feet towards those houses. So we thought this was a good balance for all the neighbors in question.
Well, we're certainly getting there, not quite there, but we're getting there. How many floors is the building? Because I have it as 35 feet. Is that two or three floors?
Well, the proposed building is just one story with, with a basement. The architect has some testimony and plans to show you the elevation of the building. But it actually, I'm just going to check on my zone chart. It's, it's right, one story is what we call out. It's under that 35 feet.
And that's awfully high for one story. And certainly if it was lower, it would not be able to be seen from South Middle Bush, which could certainly help the scenic view. I'm trying to figure out why you need 35 feet for one story.
So really the architect described, but for a house of worship, it's not a standard room. You have a room with many people in it and it's a function of the use of that room. Any house of worship, a church, any other temples, they are, I would say grander rooms. And that's what pushes the building height up.
Rooms, then you could certainly go 15, 20 feet with them, but 35 seems a little high for one story.
But also remember, that's the same height as, as houses are permitted in this zone. So it's not out of character. And it's much further back than the typical houses on, along South Middle Bush.
All right, I guess some of my other comments or questions are not necessarily for what was discussed tonight. So I will have to save them till the next time.
Okay, thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, before I move to the other members of the public, I'll just remind the public that the plans, including the site plans, the architecturals are on the township website. Including the sign, it's on sheet A 2.01 on the architectural plan. So you can review the plans online on the township website. All right, so I'll move on to. Pramal Parikh. Go ahead.
Hi, thank you for taking my question. And if it's not appropriate this time, you know, feel free to tell me so. You talked about the parking and getting a variance in the number of, of parking versus what should be there. Can I, can we understand why that's needed? Why we can't have enough parking or reduce the building size to match what should be there?
Sure. So I had given some testimony before. So there's two different calculations in the zoning ordinance. And it's basically one space per 15 square foot of worship area. And it really counts all the potential area within the building. And that comes up to the 457 spaces. There's also an occupancy calculation. There's also an occupancy calculation. It's basically, take the occupancy, which would be 458 people, and one car for three occupants, and that comes out to 153 cars. Zoning requirement, the higher number prevail, so the 457 is required. You heard, early on, we provided some general testimony, but you'll hear more, as Peter said, from the applicant about the use here, and what we tried to do was balance that parking. The stall that we have in that front parking lot is what we feel will handle kind of the weekly services. The monthly and quarterly services will overflow into the secondary parking lot. We could pave this whole front area with parking or large parts of the site. That's not what we want to do. We want to appropriately size the parking for the number of congregants, and we believe we've done that. We'll hear more testimony on the project.
So how many parking spots are there in total?
137.
So that's less than the minimum.
157.
I'm sorry, 157.
Okay, so that's barely the minimum needed, even on any calculation. Okay. What happens if you have more people than parking? You just not allowed them in?
I think you'll hear from the applicant what they're usual with any church or any temple. There are higher days, and they can talk about other transportation options they may have, but we just don't want to park with any of these. You don't design for that one day per year. You design appropriately for the site. We've done that on this property.
Even though the ordinance has something different. Okay, that's the only question I have.
Okay, the next person we have is Robert Peterson. I'll unmute you now.
Hi, good evening, thank you. I will restrict my comments and questions to what we're discussing this evening. Can you, can you tell us specifically how many variances are being granted and what they were for?
Do you want to re-outline those? Do you want me to?
Let me get my paperwork. We are seeking one variance, which is the rear yard setback. Where 200 feet is required, now we have moved it to 130 feet. The other relief that we are seeking is non-compliance with the conditional use standards. And by that, I mean churches, houses of worship are permitted in the zone and as conditional uses. And if we don't meet those conditions, then we need a D3 use variance. Those not, those conditions that we do not meet, as we've indicated earlier, is the buffer, the number of parking spaces, and the location of the parking space.
Okay. Thank you. You mentioned in the meeting tonight that there were traffic studies. We didn't get to them. Do you know when we're going to hear about those? And does the court is taking into account the fact that the land on either side of South Middle Bush is county or state owned, and the road cannot be widened in any regard?
And we did submit a traffic report. Our traffic consultant will be testifying as to the impact of this site on the, on South Middle Bush Road. It is our position that that road will not meet and be widened because of this project. And when you hear testimony as far as the number of congregants and the use of the site, I think that will answer that question.
Okay, thank you. Do you know, do we know how many trees are going to be removed? Was that something that I missed in tonight's conversation?
The question was raised, so we did a specific tree removal on the initial plan.
Mitch, talk into the microphone.
You got it. On sheet three in our set of plans on the initial set, we actually did a full tree survey of the property, and we identified ones to take down. When we come back from, we will update that to the specific trees. But they're noted on that plan, how many are going to be removed, and the new number will be described as well.
Okay, thank you. And my last point, the meeting, I think it was the attorney opened up and indicated that there were meetings held on the first of October and again on the 20th of October. And then there were, I think this meeting had been rescheduled probably two or three times. I realize these are pandemic conditions, but I would hardly think that two meetings back to back in October, and then this meeting tonight would be sufficient for the type of development that's being proposed. And I would ask this zoning board to keep that in consideration and seek more public input about this proposed development. Thank you.
Just to correct the record, we did have three meetings in this matter toward the end of 2020. There were three meetings held, and there was a hiatus partially because of us meeting with the neighbors to try to resolve some of these issues, and part of it because of some technical difficulties in scheduling. The other thing, Mr. McGannah, can we, can we ask the wait, the people who are calling in, give an address?
Oh, yeah, sorry, I forgot about that. So I'm 66 Wilson Road in Somerset. And that was my questions. Thank you.
Okay. Last name of Gupta?
First name? Yes. Hi, thank you, and first name Rohit Gupta. The address is 64 Winding Way on Route 27. My question, and you have briefly mentioned that regarding the parking spaces on the weekly, quarterly, and annual functions. And based on my understanding and coming from India, the Thursdays for Sai Temple is a very, very busy day. So how would you manage the space, as Pramal asked before, the 157 spaces on that particular day every week? Every week is going to be a heavy traffic day. But that's how the following is for the Sai Temple. That's natural.
I think that question should be held in abeyance. We will testify as to when the house of worship will operate, the number of people that we anticipate, and the testimony will include the fact that we do not even have any services on the Thursday.
I'm sorry, the last one.
There, we do not intend to have services on a Thursday.
Okay, I would love to hear from the department, from the acting in when they testify. That is a surprise, given, again, I'm from Indian descent, and Sai temples are packed on Thursdays. Not just used, but packed.
Okay, we're starting to wander from the point here.
Another point is the traffic. The point is the traffic.
The engineer, please.
That's the engineering question as to how the traffic will be managed on a heavy traffic day.
And the answer that you're getting, sir, is that there's going to be subsequent testimony from the applicant that's going to describe their operation, and you're going to hear at a subsequent meeting, the traffic engineer that's going to speak to the impact of traffic. That's, that's what, that's the response you're making.
Okay, thank you.
Any other, any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so if I could ask the members, the public who've asked their questions to put their hand down, so that way I could just make sure that we have, we've gotten to everybody. All right, thank you for doing that. And, Mr. Chairman, I'm scrolling through the members of the public. I'm not seeing anybody indicating their desire to ask a question, and there's no, nothing indicated in chat that they want to ask a question.
Okay, I'm taking it a little slow, but we'll go to close to the public if there aren't any more yet. We'll close and move forward. I guess we'll go back to Mr. Lanfrith.
Mr. Thomas, I'll leave it up to you. It is 10 minutes to 10:00. You normally don't take a witness after 10 o'clock. I don't know if it makes sense to start the testimony of a witness now and then not allow either the board or the members of the public to question that witness, so I don't know if you want me to start with my next witness at the end.
With this format, it makes sense to do everything at once, and there's not going to be enough time tonight. I hope, though, and it's no, I'm not being critical of anyone, it's the situation, but I hope we could get some consistently regular meetings on this application in the near future, so we can keep a sense of being able to follow through a little bit better, and it's a little easier to keep things in mind. So I think we need to, first of all, make sure we have an extended deadline if we need it, and a new date for the next hearing.
I had discussed this matter with Mr. Healy previously, knowing we were not going to change this matter this evening, and we were going to, I had some matters on the 15th of April, which I will move and ask that this matter be moved to April 15th, so that we will meet again next month to discuss it. I will bring the board an extension of time through, actually, May 30th, because I have a feeling we'll be back one more time after that.
Mitch, may I ask that you please stop sharing so that I can put up information for the April 15th meeting for the viewers? Thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I could, we did, and I'm not sure if they, they made it in time before we closed, but we do have two hands up. If it's okay, would you mind if we allow those two members of this public to ask a question?
It's okay, as long as the witness didn't already sign out.
I think Mr. Arndman's still there. You still there, Mr. Arndman?
I see his picture, so.
Still standing up here, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so I have an Amita Patani, so I'm going to unmute. All right, go ahead, you have a question?
Hi, good afternoon, good evening. Thanks for accommodating the last minute question. I understand there's another structure also being constructed not too far from this, you know, proposed structure. I was just wondering if the engineers of both those structures have discussed, you know, discussed, you know, traffic patterns, parking, and all of that, considering at one point, both variances were supposed to be presented at the same time, and now one is today, and then I don't, I think that the next one for the following structure is, is, has been postponed to a later date. But I'm not sure if the attorneys and legal counsel are exactly the same for both structures and/or site engineers, but we wanted to understand if the engineers have been discussing this.
I think I can answer that, Mr. Healy. There is another pending application for another house of worship in close proximity to this site, which is on the other side of the street. It's not on the same side of South Middle Bush Road. I am handling that application. And while Mr. Arndman is not the site engineer on that application, the traffic consultant for both projects is the same, and the county is aware of both projects. The traffic consultant has been in touch with the county, and the county is reviewing both projects at the same time. So the county is aware of it, we're aware of it, our traffic consultant is aware of it, and those issues will be addressed with the county as they pertain to both projects.
Okay. And, you know, is there a need to have, you know, two, two house of worship in the same, same street? I don't know. I mean, you know, I'm from Indian descent.
Okay, I'm sorry, that's, that's not a question for tonight. This is to deal with the engineering testimony. I understand your concerns. The board will be dealing with those issues when they come up. As Mr. Lanfrith mentioned, he's representing both places. We are aware that there's another application.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
All right, so we have one, one more. Pramell Perik wanted to ask another question. Go ahead. Oh, sorry, now, now you should be unmuted, go ahead.
Okay, I'll try again. Just to follow, just so I understand the process, you said the county is aware of both, and it'll come up with the county. Does that mean it comes back here to this forum, or is it a different forum that gets discussed, the traffic and, it was today, but we'll come back to this kind of forum?
The trap, the traffic will be discussed at this board, probably at the next hearing, depending how far along we get. However, the county reviews the traffic because it is on a county road, and they have the ultimate jurisdiction regarding what traffic improvements may or may not be necessary as a result of this project or the other project. So it's ultimately going to be in the county's hands, but we will be presenting traffic testimony.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Mark?
No.
Okay, well, we'll have a firm closure to the public. Any other little things that we need to wrap up before an adjournment?
We need to carry this, Mr. Chairman, on the record so that we don't have to re-notice.
Okay, that's, that's done, carried to April 15th.
Does Mr. Healy have to make an announcement, though, because of the WebEx?
Just give me a minute, I'm making a presentation, so I can bring it up.
You should be, you should be good to go.
It's being moved to April 15th, correct?
Correct.
Okay, on the screen right now is the information for April 15th, as Cedar Hill Prep is also being moved that way, so I'm just going to read that off to the members of the public who do not have, who have called in and maybe not linked in, so they are not unable to read it. The information for the April 15th meeting will be HTTPS colon forward slash, forward slash www.franklintpnj.org, forward slash home, forward slash components, forward slash calendar, forward slash event, forward slash 17600, forward slash 2193. For those of you calling in, you can call in, the call in number is 1-408-418-9388, and the access code is 1738607132. This matter will be posted on the Franklin Township website under zoning application, zoning board, and the information that I've just read off will be clearly listed there. You also can call me, Christine Woodbury, the township of the board secretary. My phone number is 732-873-2500, my phone number is 6215, and I can help you find it on the website, or I can provide the link directly to your email if that's what you wish.
And the meeting will be at 7:30 PM.
And the meeting's at 7:30 on Thursday evening.
Okay, any other little details to finish?